Madam Chairman, we're live.
Morning and welcome to our October 29th morning meeting. First up's Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for October 29th, 2025.
I moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Robin, you are up next with our claims and order claims.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all?
Good. Does anyone have any questions this morning?
I don't. I read through all that last night and everything. Good.
Right, alright.
Madam Chairman, if I could just interrupt real quick. I wanted to make sure that the commissioners were fully aware that this will be the last time we're presenting claims for fiscal year 2025. The Clerk's Office will begin closing out fiscal year 2025 in preparations for our audit that is going to be conducted in February. Just to make sure that the commissioners were fully aware.
Yep. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approved the claims, vote orders. Yeah, I believe there was a junior college.
There was not. There wasn't board orders either.
Oh, really?
Certain sweet ones this time.
That's right. There wasn't any.
There was not.
That's what was missing.
That's what was missing.
I kept looking through them. It was like...
I was searching the same thing.
Nothing to sign.
This is really small.
Is that a second?
Second. Yeah, sorry.
No worries. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Get what they said. Yeah, it was like, hmm, it couldn't click what was missing.
When we approved a change order from Straff General, all that need to be approved for payments? Or you're gonna make them wait two weeks?
We'll make them wait. We've already, we just added to the last one.
Okay.
Thanks, Robin.
Up next, did everybody get a chance to review the meeting minutes of October 22nd? I did. I didn't have any changes.
I didn't either.
I had a number of changes, so I sent those to Doug and those were changed.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2025, but the changes as presented.
Seconded.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the meeting minutes of September 22nd. That was the very short five-minute meeting that we had on the McCall impact area. I guess we did not get those done before.
We did know, Madam Chairman.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 22nd as written.
Good.
It moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did everybody get a chance to review the change order from Straff General?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself due to a family member being under this change order.
Yeah, I was good with it.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order from Straff General on the Gold Dust Shop.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Clerk Miller, please denote that Commissioner Caldwell recused. Well, we took care of business really quickly, so now we have 15 minutes until we have the next one on the agenda. Are you guys gonna have anybody else join you at 9:20?
No, I think that this will be today, Commissioner. Thank you.
Clerk Miller, do you think we can go ahead and just give us a little more time to discuss it?
I think so, Madam Chairman. Yeah, it's just a presentation. There's no action that's gonna be taken.
Let's go ahead and move forward.
Great. Thank you.
But we'll give you a little extra time if needed, so.
Great. Yeah, hopefully we'll have some questions afterwards. Mr. Miller, could you help me get connected?
Randy, if you just wanna grab one of those microphones, make sure you're set up here. You guys can all come up if you want. Grab a microphone, make sure you have one in front of you so the public can hear if needed.
Just right in here?
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
We might be hooked on that camera there. Alright, give us some background so the others know what's going on.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Robin, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Caldwell, thank you for seeing us today. My name is Randy Fox and I am here with other members of United Payette to present to you some results that we got this summer from a public survey that we conducted through the University of Idaho. We gotta... There we go. Yes, didn't get fully plugged in it.
A little virus going on there.
Hopefully not. Don't say that word.
I'll try to re-plug and see if we can... We come out. Thank you for your patience with technology. So much fun.
We all just love it.
I can tell.
When it works, it works great. When it doesn't...
Oh, we got a bird.
We've got my front screen anyway. Let me bring it up again and see how. We had it up.
It gets down on the bottom. Like he wouldn't have to pull it from a different screen, would he?
I think so. Unless he...
Down on the start bar.
Plugged in. Should've let go with it where it was. While we try to get this up, I can give you some background on United Payette. United Payette was a coalition that formed in 2020, late 2020, early 2021, in response to the Trident proposal to acquire the endowment lands around Payette and Little Payette Lakes and to privatize those lands, some of which would have gone into development and some of which Trident was proposing to donate to the state park system to expand Ponterosa State Park. That proposal was met with some pretty strong opposition from the community as well as other areas. And this is not coming up for some reason.
Do you have it on a thumb drive?
I do not, but I can put it on one if you have one handy.
I do not. If you wanna email it to me, can you email me?
Yes, I can.
And then I can...
Got me to drive it, Doug?
You can give it in here.
Randy, you can email it to me too and I'll try and run it from my computer.
Fantastic. I will do that. Thank you. I'm glad we got started early. Oh, um, could it be because I am offline? Is there a connection that I can...
If you just go to the public Wi-Fi, it should be Valley County Public Wi-Fi.
Great. We get to those. Wi-Fi? It works. Public Wi-Fi. Connected automatically. There we go. But it is still saying I am unconnected.
Calvin, I got the last two pieces of bacon.
I know. I noticed when you left Howdy's this morning and I pulled in that there wasn't any left.
That's all of theirs, too. Like, really? Can you give us the rest of it? It's Valley County public. All of them were.
That looked great on Lee Worth this morning. So I made English muffins and butter and jelly on top. And I thought that jelly's gonna end up right here. I've got an apron out, stuck it over, so I was all dressed up in an apron. I thought if people see me, they're gonna go, "What the heck?"
There we go.
I know myself well enough.
They're seeing you with a big blob of jelly.
Yes. I know myself well enough. Every time I don't want to, it's gonna all end up right in front of me. That's a beautiful hummingbird. I wish we still had them. I know.
You don't have them?
Well, not this winter, anyway.
Don't have that brand. I don't have it.
That's always my first true, you know, sign of spring was when the hummingbirds show up. Makes me happy.
You don't believe the red-winged broad-bird?
Yeah, I do.
They often show up pretty early.
The hummingbird's better, so.
Those redwings are the first guys that show up.
But they're often unreliable as far as spring is concerned.
Especially up here. When I put out my hummingbird feeder, then I'm a happy camper, so.
Yeah, Faison, I pull theirs and put them away.
Yeah. Pull mine on Labor Day every year. By then, they're pretty much gone, so.
We noticed when the leaves came off the aspens, we noticed a hummingbird nest out there.
Oh, really?
Yes. Hardly ever find those silly things.
Yeah. I always find the hornet's nest, the big globes. Yeah, the last couple of years was like, whoa, didn't even know that was there. And the blackbirds, or the icons, I guess they're stellar jays. They will sit on top and just peck the heck out of it and eat the bees out of it.
Really?
Oh, it's really fun to watch. It is.
That's why they get torn up.
Yeah, force of nature. Yeah, the birds will just go in and hack the crap out of it.
Do you want this plug back?
Did you include Commissioner Robin?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Okay, Doug, I'll take it.
And I'll give you an indication, if I could, as to when to switch the slides and that'd be lovely.
Thank you.
So again, thank you very much for making the time and thank you for your patience as we got the technology figured out. Lessons learned. Always carry a flash drive, just in case.
We hope, anyway.
Randy, I can't. Let's see if Commissioner Robin can pull it up. We're getting an error that says...
I got it. I've got it.
You've got it pulled up?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. There we go.
Okay, excellent.
Which one do I want?
From the beginning, over to the FAR. There we go. Excellent. And you could go ahead and do the next slide, please. So, United Payette formed in 2021 and the coalition is made up of local citizens, local organizations, and statewide organizations. Some of the members include the Payette Endowment Lands Alliance, who my colleague Jeff Canfield, to my left, represents, and private citizens, Chris Vetter, also to my left, is one of those individuals, and other organizations such as the Payette Land Trust, Friends of Lake Cascade, Idaho Conservation League, whom I am here representing, who I am the representative for, United Payette. And the primary goal of the coalition was to work with IDL and local officials and agencies to find pathways to conserve those endowment lands and keep them from privatization. Next slide, please. This is a map of the areas that we considered in our survey. The lands in purple are the endowment lands. Those are IDL owned and managed lands. The parcels in green are, indicate Ponterosa State Park. A little bit of yellow up to the top there is a little bit of BLM land. And then the outside green is national forest lands. And of course, the white parcels are private lands that make up McCall and other parcels that are in holdings within the endowment lands or stretching along the lake there.
Randy, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So the private lands, if I look at some of that, it's just under lease. It's not really owned by private individuals. Is that correct?
Some of that, yes, and some of it is privately owned land. Yes, ma'am.
I was looking over off Warren Wagon and it looked like that was leased, a lot of that. So those leases eventually will come back into IDL land?
Yes, similar to the cottage sites. I believe that that is, that you're correct, that that's how some of those are operated and managed. So why did we want to do a survey? We wanted to find out and gauge the public's understanding of IDL and the Forest Service missions and what those two agencies are set up to perform and do. We also wanted to learn what the public perceived as the benefits and threats, the benefits from and the threats to the endowment lands around the lakes. And we wanted to learn what Valley County residents valued about those lands. And finally, which was the main point of our survey, was to learn if the public felt that a potential land exchange between IDL and the Forest Service was in the best public interest. Next slide, please. So the survey basics. We set this up through the University of Idaho. We talked with Boise State University as well as the University of Idaho to determine who would best fit our needs. We came down with U of I for several reasons. One, they have connections, deep connections to this community. And two, the College of Natural Resources and Society are very well versed with public surveys and implementing those and getting them out in a non-biased sort of manner. So invitations were sent to 6,738 addresses throughout the county. Based on the census polls from the last census, the researcher determined that we would need 372 responses to get a 5% margin of error with 95% confidence level. And what that means is that if we ran this survey 100 times, 95 of those times, we would expect the same results within a 5% margin of error. We ended up getting 840 complete responses. We actually got over 900 responses, but once we cleaned up the data and the researcher that we were working with removed some survey responses that were incomplete or that they answered the same thing all the way across the line. Once those surveys were cleaned up and looked at in the mix, then we had 840 complete surveys. That brought our margin of error or our confidence level to a 3.3% margin of error. So we feel very confident that these results are representative of the county. And 97% of the respondents did say that they identify as year-long permanent residents in Valley County. And this is my Richard Dawson moment I've always wanted to say. And survey sense? We'll go to the next slide here.
I didn't get one.
Really?
Yeah.
66%.
I should've. You should've.
They did.
They might've.
66% of the survey respondents say that they support a land exchange between IDL and the Forest Service. And as you can see, there is some 30-odd percentage that oppose or strongly oppose potential exchange. You could go to the next slide, please. We did break this out by communities and you can see that McCall has the strongest percentage for support, which isn't surprising because the majority of the responses did come from McCall. I can tell you that 70% of our responses or 588 surveys came from McCall, whereas Cascade had 16% and Donley with 14% and less than 1% came from Yellow Pine. So that accounts for some of that balance and McCall is also the community that's most impacted. I would like to point out on the far right there that on average, there's a 20% of the respondents said that they need more information about a potential exchange. And we believe that that is an opportunity for additional advocacy and information sharing. And there's the following slides will show you what I'm talking about.
So, real quick question on that?
Yes, sir.
Why is there even discussion on doing anything with exchanging with the Forest Service from IDL's lands?
Why is there a discussion about this?
Yeah.
First, because IDL is interested in acquiring lands that will more readily meet their mandate to provide for the state beneficiaries. That, as you may know, much of that comes from timberland, from timber resources. It also comes from recreational leases. The best example that I can give you in our community is Tamarack Resort. The current resort is operating solely on IDL land, so they pay a recreation lease to IDL for that or mineral leases such as gravel pits and/or other minerals that are extracted from the soils. So they're looking for lands that can best meet their needs. The Forest Service is potentially looking to acquire lands that are key to assuring public access remains and avoiding opportunities or instances that have come up. For example, with DF Development or any other private owner that has blocked access through that, that may have been historically available but then may have not made, continued that and it prevented access to public lands beyond those. So the Forest Service is looking, I believe, to acquire opportunities that would prevent that from happening should they be lost to privatization. So I think that those are some of the main reasons, but there are also management mandates. They each have different management protocols and mandates that they must attend to and meet. And I think that this is also somewhat community-driven to see if there is a way forward that everyone can remain whole. That IDL can acquire what they need and get out of the landlord, if you will, business from properties around the lake. The community would get what they are seeking to find, which is retaining that open space and not seeing development around the lake or on some of the key ridge lines. And also to reduce the wildland-urban interface opportunities for expansion in that area, perhaps affect wildfire risk and protect water quality. And you'll see some of these benefits in the further slides as we get into this.
Could I interject something?
Please do.
I think one of the slides coming up will answer your question a little bit better, Commissioner. But the reason that we're involved and I think the reason that most people support the idea of the exchange is that, as the next slide will show, IDL is required to maximize revenues on their lands. And because these lands are the best lands for timber production, they're becoming more and more valuable as development. And so the Constitution's gonna require them to dispose of them because that's where they'll make the most profit for the endowment. And so the whole reason that United Payette formed is to try to find a way to prevent that from happening. Our major objective is to prevent privatization of those lands. And IDL eventually will need to dispose of those lands just to meet the requirements in the Constitution.
Right. And I'm aware of all that. I was just curious, the reasoning behind it. I appreciate that.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. When we also asked, "How important is the idea of an exchange?", we start to see some numbers switch a little bit from that previous slide of support or not support. A strong 85% of the respondents said that it is important to, extremely important, to engage with the idea of an exchange. If you could go to the next slide, please. We also broke this out by community and you can see that there's a little bit more of a shift away from the being familiar with the idea. If you look at the somewhat familiar column there, most people, the greatest preponderance of respondents, were not familiar with the process of a land exchange or the idea of how they operate. And that covers, that is true across all of our communities in Valley County. Again, we see this as an opportunity for engagement and education. And if you would go to the next slide, please. This is also backed up by the responses we found, we got from the question asking if our survey respondents understood the difference between public lands or those lands that are federally managed and state endowment lands. And again, you can see there's a lot of folks in the community that do not understand the difference despite the many conversations that United Payette has had within the community over the last few, five years, the conversations that the commissioners themselves have had or IDL. There's still a lot of folks out there that don't understand those differences. And we see that as another opportunity for engagement and education and information sharing. And we are personally hopeful that through those actions, if we were to take this survey again, that those support and opposition numbers would rise and fall respectively, just through that advocacy work. When we asked how concerned people were with privatization, overwhelmingly, 91% of our survey respondents were either very or extremely concerned about privatization around Payette Lake. Go to the next slide. When we broke that out by community, you can see that even though Cascade and Donley, the respondents there, were not as sure about a potential exchange, they are very sure that privatization is an extreme or very much a concern for them. Go to the next slide, please. This does back up a previous survey that was done this summer by Conservation Voters for Idaho that showed that 96% of registered voters in Idaho support public lands staying in public hands. If you go to the next slide, please. We also asked what our survey respondents would think about, what they think about the management goals of public lands versus around Payette Lake and Little Payette Lake. And for these sections of questions, we did ask the survey respondents to consider "public lands", in quote there, as all non-private lands. IDL lands are not public lands and we recognize that, but they do allow public access. So for the purposes of this question, public lands are considered... So for the purposes of this question, public lands are considered all non-private lands. So BLM, the park, IDL, Forest Service, they all sit in there. As you can see, protecting the water quality and allowing for public access were some of the strongest, uh, uh, agree points on what should be management priorities. And these, um, six items over here on the left, six or seven items, they were taken directly from the US Forest Service and Idaho Department of Lands webpages to, uh, pull out their main mission points and mandates. So we are not making a comment on any of those or judging any of that. That's just straight from, from their own, um, websites. Um, as you can see on the, on the far left side, um, when it comes to the lands around Payette and Little Payette Lake, um, the public, uh, does not believe that maximizing finance, uh, long-term financial returns or allowing for extractive uses such as mining, and you'll see that in the next slide, are the best uses for those lands when they believe that the highest priority for management goals should be water protection and allowing for public access.
You know, that's true, except for one thing that we see happen in our forests, without our forests doing thinning and logging. Take that, all that endowment land around Payette Lake and you swap it with the forest, forest's not going to be thinning those lands. And that's just a fireball waiting to happen around our developed city people. And that, that's a concern.
And I, I, I hear your concern, Commissioner. I believe that that's a conversation that we, if, if you'd like to get into that deeper conversation, I'd be happy to have that with you. That is not an issue that United Payette engages on. How the, the specific management protocols, that's beyond our specific mission, what we're looking at.
Just look at it, safety for the folks that are.
I understand.
Did you guys hear me say that once or twice?
Yes, we, and, 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 and I should note, and I didn't do this before and I will now, so let me backtrack. I wanted to thank Commissioner Mopin for joining us when we had a task force, United Payette had a task force, to work with our University of Idaho, uh, uh, contact and develop the survey. And we had some good conversations about, um, stress points and how to phrase things. And the commissioner's input was, was critical to this. We also had a representative from the city of McCall participate in it, um, from McCall City Council. And, um, we, we feel that while by no means is this survey perfect. And as we look back on it, of course, there are things that we can look at and say, oh, we could have tweaked here, we could, but we're not letting perfection be the enemy of good. And we believe by pulling all of those voices in, that we created, um, a non-biased survey that did not lead our, our respondents in any direction and just presented them with the information as we could, best we could, and to gauge their responses.
No, I just, I just look outside of the box and look at the whole picture.
Support of Commissioner Thompson's, uh, comments on this because I felt, and I had the same thoughts when I took the survey, that inferred that if the Forest Service was to take it over, water quality would improve. Well, that is true up until we have a major fire there, which could be very detrimental to water quality. We're seeing it here in Cascade.
Absolutely.
So I think it's really important because it's being inferred that if the Forest Service takes it over, water quality will improve or stay at the level it is. And that is, that's not concret, that's not consider, but that's.
Well, the, the, the fact that people think that it will stay at least as it is because there won't be any development that, you know, puts in more pavement and causes more runoff and all of that stuff. I think that's more accurate than people thinking that it will improve.
Yeah, and we were very.
And the other thing is who you looked recently because the state has been pretty busy reducing the fire hazard on, on both sides of the lake. Uh, three years ago on the east side, they logged pretty much, um, the loggable ground, um, from south end of the lake, clear up to, um, Tamarack Bay. And from Tamarack Bay north, that is mostly not loggable ground. Ain't too much on it. And on the west side, they just did, um, another sale, um, from, oh, I don't know, partway up Orton Wagon Road and then all the way up to, um, a piece of private land that's up in there. And so.
But Chris, you're making the point, the state is logging.
Yes.
Forest Service is not.
Well, they are, they certainly are. There's lands on the road.
There are mechanisms in place as.
I don't know, sure.
We also, you know, and this is getting beyond our mandate, but there are mechanisms in place for that to happen, such as shared stewardship, good neighbor authority. But again, that is beyond what United Payette was, was seeking to do with this survey.
Guys, we have three minutes left.
Fantastic.
We have extra time.
That's okay. Um, we also looked at, uh, asked what folks believe would be the benefits, um, what they perceive to be the benefits of the lands around, uh, the lake. And as you can see, there are a strong support, again, for, uh, quality drinking water uh, and various habitats. When it gets down to, uh, residential development or mining, they do not see that, uh, Valley County residents do not see those as, uh, very strong benefits from, that are extracted from the endowment lands. Go to the next slide, please. Then we asked about threats, what threats do you see? Again, you can see that the perceived benefits, losing those would, um, are seen as extreme threats. And, um, you've got these, uh, economic factors that are down in the lower portion. This is a very busy table, so what does it mean? If you would, uh, go to the next slide, please, Commissioner. Eighty-three percent of the survey respondents believe that decreased drinking water quality, if we were to lose the quality that we have, that it is a considerable threat. Losing wildlife habitat, uh, is also a threat. The categories associated with economic values, um, such as tourism or increased winter recreation, those items, the loss of those, uh, or I should say that those items are not seen as threats. So having recreation, having the winter recreation, having tourism, that's not a threat to the endowment lands, um, is what.
Just because it's kind of the same use. I mean, we wouldn't lose that threat just because of the.
That's right, there's an inverse relationship between those. Um, and if you'd go to the next slide, please. This gives a little bit more information about the threats, um, what were perceived as threats. And if you go to the last slide, I believe that we're at our questions. We do have a PDF of a, uh, not all of the survey results are in this. And obviously there's stuff that we weren't able to dig into today. We do have a PDF of a survey, uh, summary document that I will send to Mr. Miller when I get back to the office today, and then he can share that out with all of you. And if you have any further questions beyond that, please reach out. We'd be happy to answer them where we can. And if we can't answer them, we will find those answers together. Thank you very much for allowing us the time today.
Yep, thank you guys.
Let's talk next steps. So the reason for this survey is so that all of us are informed on, you know, what the public is hearing. But next steps are talking to our congressional delegation and actually seeing if this is a possibility or not. We've been working on a land exchange down here in the Cascade area for, for three years. And it's, you know, I mean, it's just silent. So I don't know where you guys are or who you have working on it at the federal level. If you do, you know, I guess what is the ask, what is, what's the next steps?
The next steps will be for, because we do not have a formal proposal, um, from IDL or the Forest Service. They are, they're communicating with each other, they have some ideas, but we don't, they, they have not formalized which particular parcels for which particular parcels. So until we have that, it, we cannot really, it's, it's hard to, to share that additional information that many of the respondents were asking for, you know, or said that they need more information. Those are the critical next steps and that's beyond our control. Once we get to that, we, we, we do want to share these results with the land board, with our congressional staffers, um, with our state representatives for the district, um, with as many audiences as we can reach, the chambers of commerce, the rotary clubs, just to share that out. And then once, um, there is a formal proposal, if there is a formal proposal, then we'll start working to get that information out and share that with the community as well.
State parks is part of this conversation too?
Yes, it is.
To expand Ponderosa State Park. We were trying to help identify what parcels would make sense to expand the park.
Thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Thank you for all the hard work. I'm sorry I have not been there recently anyway. But I knew we were well on our way, so I chose to.
You got us over the big hump. You helped us get to the big hump and, and get the, the survey implemented. I think we designed it, as I mentioned earlier, as we look back, were there things that we could have done better or worded differently?
Absolutely.
But I still think that we, we created a good survey. Um, it was well implemented. We gave over two months for people to take an opportunity to take it. And Commissioner Caldwell, I, I appreciate you taking it. And I hope that, uh, if you had the opportunity, that the other commissioners did that as well. We're excited about the possibilities and we are very excited to get these results and learn where people are because that gives United Payette an opportunity to engage further and know what we need to engage on and what information needs to be shared so we are all understanding from the same page.
All right, please keep us updated on, you know, anything that you see as movements. I, I think that we will all need to be on the same page in order for anything to happen with this. So I think it's important that, uh, the commissioners remain engaged and updated.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good rest of your day. And I will send you the PDF this afternoon to distribute out.
Greg, would you please?
I will, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Up next on our agenda is to continue to pay out PTO for P and Z Director and Planner Two.
Well, we, so we continue to be unable to take our vacation because of all the different things going on between, oh, the comp plan, the ordinances, um, the move, the new software, we're starting, I mean, it's just, we're unable to. So we would like an extension through the end of the second pay period in December, if possible, and reassess it at that time.
Absolutely.
I would incur with that, there's just too much going on right now, so.
I've been coming in.
No, you have.
I have two employees that are constantly having to take time off to, so they don't lose time. And as you know, it was chaotic for us as well through the move and everything. Is this something that you are, are just extending to the, the two people mentioned on the agenda? Is it something I need to come ask for or extension and/or a payout, whatever?
The public can't hear you, but, so this is a question about whether this is going to be county-wide or just within a division. I think we need to know why. I mean, in planning and zoning right now, we have the impact area conversation that's happening. And so there is a lot of things happening there other than the move. So if yours is about the move, we need to know why, because the move is really a week-long event versus the comp plan has been ongoing for quite some time and has specific deadlines that have to be met. So that's why planning and zoning, that's, I'm certainly in support of planning and zoning because I know what they're having to do right now in order to meet those time deadlines.
I'll, I'll ask to be put on the agenda and I'll bring forward the two folks that constantly struggle.
I think one thing we all need to think about is how we got to this position now. That we're, we're, we are keeping such high PTO levels that when we get into a situation like this, we hit the top. And we have to focus on a work-life balance and we have to take time off. So I understand that there's certain times that maybe this is warranted, but we need to make sure that when we get to these certain times, we're not carrying such high PTO balances that, that we're putting ourselves into this situation.
I agree.
Yeah, for years, I mean, I've lost PTO and it hasn't been a thing, but there's a lot of stuff associated with these impact areas that, I mean, that's what we talked about last time was, I, you, you told us we could not take time off.
We've got, got a lot on your plate.
So I would have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the PTO extension for P and Z and Planner Two. Planning and zoning director.
Been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But I do want to have a discussion, maybe next year sometime, with all the department heads, that we really need to be carrying manageable PTO levels and not.
Yeah, but, but historically we've done is just give it away to people that want PTO where we just lose it.
That's also not promoting a work-life balance. And, I mean, PTO is here for a reason and it's, it's a benefit to every employee. We should be recommending you use it rather than lose it.
Agreed.
There's so much, and, and I'm not arguing at all. It's like twenty-four hours a month, that's a huge amount of time to take off, so.
You can give it to me, I'll go hunt you.
Just going, man, I went downtime so bad, I can't stand it, so. All right, let's move into our next. I don't know what everyone's here for. Is there something specific other than moving into?
Just relieving Doug here for a minute.
Okay. All right, Terry, you're up next.
Okay, so I just need to finalize, um, the landscape maintenance contract and the weather replacement contract with your signatures. It's been through PAs and whatnot. But I also wanted to set in stone a signature authority so that I can continue with maintenance agreements, without having to go through all the whole process. It, I guess it's not so much cutting you out because you will still see it, but working directly with Oki and having my signature authority to push it through faster than what we have been doing. So, and I think, I believe Scott had seventy-five hundred dollar signature authority. I'm asking for ninety thousand. Reason being is ten thousand above, or a hundred thousand above, we have to post for bid, get three bids. What I would like to do is get bids in-house myself instead of posting into the, the paper or whatnot and taking the best one and having my signature authority. And, and most of these will roll over into next years if we don't need to, see if we have a better bid out there, if that makes sense. A good example would be the, um, propane, you know, that should be bid every year, things of that nature, but. In-house, the things that are like our sun belts, those are controls that are done by a certain company that ha, that roll over every year because it's, it's the technology that is there, so they open it. We can't go anywhere else, so.
My only concern, Terry, is, um, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar CAP limit. And so going above that twenty-five thousand gives me pause. So for anybody, for any director, I think that that should be a, a limit that would be acceptable, um, to me anyway. I think the ninety is too high for any one director. So I, personally, I would like to see that limit set at twenty-five. I don't know your guesses, that's just my one thought. I don't know your guesses, that's just my one thought.
Can I have a, give us a reasoning behind the ninety?
The reasoning behind the ninety is, any, like I said, anything under a hundred thousand dollars has to be post-for-bid, right? Go through the whole proposal po, process. Um, it will streamline. My ability to make things happen, uh, in-house, instead of having to go through a huge, long process that we have now, right? So right now, I don't have any signature authority, so I go out and I get as many bids I can, I come to you with them. You approve them, whatnot, I have to go to Oki, I get a contract, all signed up, then I have to go back to you, say that's good. Contractor has to sign it, and then here we are with the final.
So I think we're confused on the process, though.
No, I spoke with, I spoke with Oki, and he's, and he did tell me if. What it's based on is my signature authority versus your signature authority. Everything else is the same. I have to go through the contracting, I have to have Oki sign off on everything. Have to make sure that they have the correct insurance. Everything is the same, with the exception of having to file an action item with you guys. And wait for your meetings.
But you don't have to go out for bid.
No.
Because it, let me, let me finish, please.
Sorry.
Um, you don't have to go out for bid, just the difference in signatories. I mean, it's either you have to go out for bid or you don't have to go out for bid. The process is, if it is a re, if it is a annual contract. That, um, that verbiage is not changing, the dates are changing. Then we have allowed those to just go to Oki for approval, to make sure that it's the same contract. Or just come to us. You don't even have to go through Oak in that situation, if it's the same contract, with just a date change. But the signatory part of it doesn't change, just because of the limit, or who's signing on it. So you have me confused on that process. Because policy is not that we have to sign anything up to a hundred thousand, or go out to bid up to a hundred thousand.
So if I had signature authority for, like, landscaping, here, here's a good example. So the landscaping is, I think it, yeah, twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy, right? If I had the signature authority, I wouldn't have to make an agenda item for you guys. I could sign it myself with the help of PA's office to make sure the contract is correct and they have the correct insurance. So it takes time off of your agenda, it takes time off of me having to come and tell you what you already know. And get your signature again, that's all. I'm trying to streamline. This position. Has a lot of lift that needs to be done, uh, uh, not just here with facilities and maintenance, but also. Your solid waste issues are huge. So what I'm trying to do is streamline as much as I can to stay out of meetings and actually execute stuff to get it done.
Technically, the twenty-five thousand five seventy would have to go through CIP. That's what I'm trying to avoid. I don't want directors signing off on stuff that has to go through CIP.
Landscape contractor have to go through CIP? Doesn't seem like it's a CIP.
I don't.
That'd be maintenance.
Yeah, that's contract maintenance, my assumption, from what I see, but any, any kind of upgrading.
If you're looking at me for recommendations regarding this matter, any agreement that, uh, the county is bound to. Has to be approved by the commissioners. That, that's just the way that it, that, uh, we currently operate. Um, our contracts within Valley County. Any type of contract that the county enters into. Needs to be signed up by the commissioners.
Can we change that, though, with the signatory approvals?
That's just allows them to make purchases. That was my understanding, but I think we should probably consult with the prosecuting attorney's office to make sure. Uh, that we are complying with his recommendations or their recommendations.
I think maybe we should table this.
I, I think so also. I'm not comfortable with the ninety thousand, but.
And I don't know that I'm not, but I, I would like some more info, I would like to talk to the.
I think what the, what we were trying to develop was a procurement policy, commissioners, and I think the. The sign, the signatory a- allowable amount was specifically related. Uh, to any type of expenditures that the department heads were making. But any type of agreements, I really, I personally feel strongly that the commissioners. Need to be approving that, because it's binding the county, uh, to any specific agreement, and. Personally, i- i- it could be, it could require the elected official or. Um, the department head to be personally liable. Let's just say if, uh, entering into like a lease agreement. Or something of that nature, it is quite possible that that individual be, uh, personally responsible for the lease agreement. And not the county in a whole.
Uh, when it's, when it's, agreement's going, like she's saying, like the maintenance of the landscaping. Uh, the agreement with that, with that, that is coming out of her budget. And that's just an agreement that she's doing, she's running through, uh, Oki's office.
And I could be wrong, but I mean, once you guys approve the budget, um. We do have the approval to spend the money, right? It just depends on. How you want to block it out, to how much and when I can spend. Of course, it's not ever going to be over budget. Unless we have emergencies, which will come right back in front of you.
So we will need to do a complete change on our purchasing, so this is a workshop item. The legal signature authority. The Board of County Commissioners is the county's only legal signature, signature authority able to sign contracts. Or agreements on behalf of the county. So it's, contracts can only be signed after a formal motion in a public meeting. No other elected official, department head, or appointed board of, or committee member may obligate the county without specific approval. Uh, prior from the board. However, the road department director is hereby granted approval to approve contracts less than ten thousand dollars, provided the expense. Is included in the road department budget. So we're going to have to change the procurement policy itself, if we choose to do this differently. And then we have to look at it, not just buildings and grounds, but also. Um, all departments, and when a contract would come up, why it would need to be approved like this, so. Um, procuring services or personal property. Ida Code allows items with a value of twenty-five thousand or less to be purchased on the open market. Items with a value of twenty-five to fifty may be purchased after a semi-formal, this is changed. We need to update our procurement policy anyway. Change in legislation last year. Okay, let's, let's take, and we don't mean to sideline you, but let's make sure that, um. Our procurement policy is also updated. So I will put this on for a workshop, hopefully next week.
Put it off for next week, I'm sure.
Let's do that, and then we can have a larger conversation about it.
There's an action item also.
Yes, there is an action item for.
Then Chair McKenzie's waiting for her ten o'clock.
No, I, I think we can get through the rest of these. Um, discussion on the Cascade Annex heating system. So we talked last week about, so I was confused last week. I, I know I was walking out while you were talking about the AC, but. But we had ACL summer. All of a sudden, we don't have AC.
So you have obsolete units down there. They're all twenty-five plus years old. They all have old refrigerant. If they happen to have a leak somewhere, which obviously they do, because they're low on refrigerant, um, it's R twenty-two, which is being phased out. It'll cost you probably half as much to repair and refill it as it would be to replace the entire obsolete unit. Right? So you've got seven AC units over there. That's good ballpark, around eighty thousand dollars. That's just the ballpark of repair, of replacing those completely. The boiler hasn't, I don't believe, been operating. Uh, when we did turn it on, uh, the control valve within the liquid system is all clogged. So now it's a hundred percent go, which is why they're at eighty degrees down there, because we can't stop the flow. Um, if it tries to cool, uh, it thinks it's cooling, but really it's just heating, because the boiler water won't stop.
So, well, okay, well, first of all, the seven AC units are not all failing at once. So we take them a little bit at a time in the budget.
So they are all failing, none of them work. They got one to work while I was there.
All summer long, we haven't had any AC in that building? I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Now, we're talking, yeah, because it's a complex unit. You've got heating and cooling. Um, the building is very insulated, right? And we don't get super hot out here, so. These guys have been in the basement, they're not really feeling the heat. They're not. And in the winter, they told me they were using personal heaters underneath their desks. So that makes sense, that they were pretty much fine. Um, as far as my maintenance team is aware of, they did not turn the boiler on yet. Since you guys have had the building. Could be good, or could be, that could be good information, or it could be bad information, but the one that I have here that's been here for a while. As, as far as he's aware, they've never gone over there and turned it on.
Interesting.
So when we did this year, we cooked them out. Sorry, so sorry.
What's the fix?
So we need to, right now, we need, I'm getting a quote for. What they're going to have to do is probably flush the entire boiler system, they're maybe have to replace some valves inside there, because they're probably clogged with crud. Um, then the system's going to have to be refilled and. I don't know how much that's going to cost, but to make it through the winter, we s, we keep everything on heat only, we don't. We don't put any, any cool on, because it'll be at heat and then off, heat and then off. There won't be any cooling.
I don't know if you need to get a bid. I mean, it sounds like this is an emergency purchase.
Well, I, it's, I got a quote coming, but, you know, they, it's going to take time for them to put together.
So will the boiler work for, right now, with just the heat and then it turns off and then heat?
I can't, we cannot really control it very well. It's not going to be great for anybody.
When, when the boiler's on, it's constantly running. Well, no, it's just too hot.
It's too hot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the hot water is pumping through all the pipes through there, right? And then we got fans that push it. So it won't stop. The valve won't close to stop that hot water when it reaches temperature. And then it get so hot, it goes, oh, we need air conditioning. And then it thinks that it turns the valve back over to cool, to shut off, but it really didn't. So now the fan comes on, it thinks it's cooling, but really it's just blowing over those hot coils still.
Sounds like a terrible system.
It's, it works wonderful if it works, right? But I mean, if, if, I don't think it's been maintained for a long time.
So you say this is an electric boiler? What are you looking at in terms of, uh, electrical bills?
Huge. I can't tell you, because I don't know for sure what, what they've got over there, but once you get people in there and you're actually using it, that is. Let's just say, for an example, the house on the corner here, that tiny one, I think it's four hundred fifty bucks a month for their electrical bill, just for the tiny house. Right over here, ours. So if that gives you any indication, that that's all electric, of what that building's going to cost us.
Yeah, because I have electric and it can be.
Yeah, crazy.
A hundred dollars a month, crazy.
Yeah.
Your house?
Yeah, that's why we have a wood stove too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's going to be very high cost in utilities until we can get that under control.
So I guess my question is, do we stick with the electric boiler, or do we look at propane, or what, what are the options?
I think we've got geohheat over there, right? Geothermal heat?
A geothermal just across the tracks.
I don't know how much that'll cost versus, but I highly suggest we don't stay with electrical, yes. Highly suggest.
So for now, we've got to get it fixed. Let's just move forward and get it fixed. We got to get through the winter.
We do not have any parking lot lights that work either.
She's, she's working on that.
I'm working it. These are all thing, like, I came to you guys a while ago and asked, please don't move us till the spring, so we can get. Stuff fixed. I came in late and here we are. We're going to hit it head-on, do the best we can, but please understand, there's a lot down there. There's a lot. Only got two of us. Yes, it is. Well, there is one light, I think, for the prosecuting downstairs on the building.
Just safety of employees walking in and out, and people.
That start, in the wintertime, uh, start well before it's light outside, and so the. Parking lot lights are a priority for us.
Do we know what's wrong with them?
Yeah.
So we've got power to them all, but, so my, we're going to have to get a lift to get up there. My assumption is ballast and bolts are, are bad. We really should go to, to LED and retrofit them. But, you know, again, that's another.
Well, can we call?
That's coming to me, yes.
So she's, she's working on it.
Okay, well, time's going to change on Sunday. It's going to give us morning light. Um, not afternoon light. I mean, we're going to be okay for a couple of weeks anyway, before it gets too dark at night. And get Tri-State on it, get them fixed. And I understand your comments about not moving until spring, but this is kind of like behind the eight ball. I mean.
I think I've been on behind the eight ball since I've been here.
I'm sorry about that. You're going to get on top of it. I have full, full faith in you to do that.
Yeah. So the plan is to, I think, you know, we're going to have very questionable parking spaces up there. Uh, I did speak with Annette. I believe her team is probably going to park down in the, um. Fairgrounds area and get in their work vehicles and drive up to the top. So that they don't have work vehicles and their personal vehicles and trying to, I just, it's. It's going to be very, uh, interesting how we, how it all falls through with the amount of people there.
Have, have we made a plan with the road department in terms of plowing, so they, because I don't, I think they store snow behind the grandstands, right? I don't believe they plow back into there.
I don't know.
I'm just thinking through, so to park vehicles near the grandstands.
I mean, well, here, and how many, how many parking spots do we have?
Got forty-four right now.
And how many of our county employees are going to be working out of that building?
Forty-four.
Okay, so I mean.
But I know we have forty-four spaces, and we total.
I don't think we have forty-four going down there.
No, I, I totaled them up with Sue and all the different departments and, and I think we were okay. So.
The problem is, we're going to have snow on it pretty soon. You're not even going to see the lines that are painted on it, so. And. You don't have to park them back of the stands. I mean, you could park where the road department is, or, you know, but, yeah.
Still, I mean, it's going to cause.
Kristen needs to know what we need.
Right, and it, it's going to cause, you know, congestion over there for the road department too. Operating big rigs in and out of there with people's personal vehicles and work vehicles that they're not used to either.
What's our liability if we have employees walking from the fairgrounds up on it, that's, it's not real, there's not.
I don't suggest that at all, ever.
Maybe with your inner tube on the way down.
Well, then we probably need to make it like a policy on that, because if someone falls and hurts himself. Because there's no parking up top and they have to park.
Park down and then they try to walk up that hill?
I'm a little worried about falls these days.
A bet.
You know how it goes.
Okay.
We got, we got, we do have good insurers, though.
I'm telling you, as you get older, once you've done those stupid things to yourself, it, it, insurance isn't worth it. I just don't think it's not.
Well, and we might need a motor pool area, where all of the motor pool vehicles are in a location. And when somebody needs one, you drive down, you go get it with your personal car, you leave your personal car there, so motor pool needs to be in. The road department area.
So we'll, I think we.
We will work on that today.
Let's not do a knee jerk, let's, let's see how this all flushes out, and then we cross that bridge as we get there.
That's just asking for challenges. We need to plan this out. So that it goes smoothly, so. We don't have people calling us.
Yeah, like me.
With big concerns.
Oh, I know, I know, but you don't know the need until the need's there, so.
You can a- absolutely anticipate needs.
Seventeen, but, so my appraisers in December will go home and work from home, so that's going to free up seven spots. Which will be very helpful.
How many employees do you have going down total?
Uh, so, I think I have a total of se, well, I'm three short right now, but a total of seventeen if I'm fully staffed.
I have twenty-six employees. We have forty-four parking spaces. I thought we had twenty-eight going, so. So we have twenty-six to twenty-eight employees going down.
What do you have, Annette? You got five employees? Four?
Alright, we will work on the motor pool issue. Um, you've got a couple of things signed, we're behind.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good. The boiler con, replacement contract?
Yes, this is the.
So we had already voted on approval of these, you just need signature?
Yes, I've just come through everything. Landscape and the.
They don't have to be really cute.
Ken, Ken's got some. I guess with that.
Okay, so we've got both of those.
So Terry, you got somebody coming to look at the heating system?
They've already looked at it. Yeah, they've already looked at it and they're three, um, and they're getting a bid to fix the boiler for the winter.
Yeah, with the AC units. That's what the guy.
I think we just gotta get it fixed.
Yes, for right now, right now. I'll be down there soon.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, I said, there's Mackenzie, oh, there's Mackenzie.
We don't need a motion.
Thank you for waiting.
Hey, they used to.
Of course. Okay, we'll move on, next up is our new gr- bro- hey, I can't even talk now. New grant programs for the nonprofits within the county.
Awesome, um, okay, so, um, let's see, do you guys have the overview that I have put together?
Yes, we did get it this morning.
All right, I, I had sent it to, but they didn't get it in their packet, so they're probably reviewing it.
That's fine. I think the biggest thing, like how I, like. Okay, so just the approach was, um, you know, the purpose, which I think we're all sort of aware of, um, but then I, in my own head, trying to answer, what I would say kind of frequently asked questions, um, there's a couple, I think, key things about, like eligible applicants, um, review of the timeline, and then, um, once that's approved, I think the next step would be to build, a new webpage, so that we can push it out and promote it. Um, I did also include sort of an evaluation and selection process with some, like a, a rubric scoring with points, so that we can, make some of this more objective, and then also applicants understand, what they will be scored on and help them align projects to fit this community grant program, so, I'm having to answer questions and I'm gonna take notes so that we can review and update, uh, because my goal would be, after this, is to get enough, consensus that we could start on a webpage build, so that we can, uh, start promoting the grants.
So I am questioning priority areas. So, we don't have housing on there, what about housing? What about specific, um, you know, just programs throughout the community, we, if we, if we just identify sectors that we're gonna fund, then it takes off the opportunity for all nonprofits to participate.
We could just add it, and other priority areas as.
Other community needs as identified, or something like that, so.
Well, I think you could say priority, priority areas include but are not limited to, so that.
Yeah.
People can still apply if they don't fall under that, those categories.
Okay, something that it opens it up for specialty one-off projects or something like that, that is, you know, designated as community. The community services, the programs that strengthen the quality of life in Valley County, so there is that in there also.
I'm, I'm taking notes and editing this document as we chat, and then I will send this back out, uh, a, a version two, if you wanna do a final review on that.
I think that if we're gonna open this up November one, we probably need to have, like, we can approve it with the changes as best find.
Agreed. What do we have stated on a review board? Who are you thinking of for our review board?
Um, I was just gonna ask some.
Do we need it identified that there'll always be a commissioner on it, you know, three community members, and maybe,
I, I always think office or something like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can put that it will include a commissioner, another elected official, and other community members.
Yeah, Johanna might wanna be under this treasurer or clerk's officer. Detailed budgets. Do we need their tax identification number on there too? Being uploaded, every grant I apply for, we gotta have our ten on there too.
And I think, uh, Mackenzie, it should say partial funding may be awarded at the discretion of the, maybe the group that's, the advisory committee, and the Valley County Commissioners, because we'll have the final authority, but, that gives the advisory committee the ability to partially fund if we have so many or something.
And I, I don't see anything that talks about that applicants that are not in good standing from previous, um, grant awards. You know, something, something along the lines that there will not be consideration if you haven't completed your outstanding reports, or not in good standing from previous grant awards.
And then whatever commissioners on here should have that information too, so it shouldn't even pass the.
Other than that, it looks great to me.
All right, so let me see, uh, I realized on the online application in general, we didn't have, I sort of assumed it, but I'm gonna add in stuff for the con- like, general contact information, organizational contact information, which would include the EIN mailing address, all those, that kind of official, um, information as well, so I'm just making notes on that.
We might put on it also, that a list of the current board members.
Okay.
That we can make sure we don't have a board of two or something like that, you know, that it is a vibrant board addressing, numerous perspectives.
So, one other, and I don't know if this is necessary or not, on several grants that I have applied for recently, they do also require you to upload, a copy of a, uh, official meeting minutes where, um, application for this grant funding was discussed and approved by the board, mainly, I think, just to keep the board aware of what, is happening, I don't know if we have to take that step, I'm honestly not sure what compliance, issue sparked that new thing on some of these other ones, but I'm just curious if we wanna get ahead of that and say, in addition to uploading, you know, a, a list of your board of directors, please also upload, um, a copy of your meeting minutes where, this grant application was approved, or going after this grant application was approved, that might be an unnecessary step, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Know what you're saying, but I'm a little bit concerned on timing, if somebody doesn't understand the timing deadline, they may not be able to have a meeting between those two.
Maybe for this first one, we don't do that, but we keep that in mind for next year.
Yeah. Or even a letter of support from the board or something like that, something that the board chairman would have to sign off on.
Okay.
Because that would be easier to ascertain maybe than, or, or meeting minutes, because, meeting minutes, you gotta approve them at the next meeting, in order for them to be adopted anyway, so.
Yeah, um.
That would be tough. Neil, do you have any questions?
No, no, this time.
I just wanted to tell Mackenzie, thank you so much for all of your help on this, you were a huge help getting this.
Yeah, of course.
I would agree with thing, Catlin also, because she took it and ran with it, I was way too far behind, so therefore.
I wanna clarify one thing on the, um, advisory committee, I have listed one commissioner, one elected official, and three community members, that's five. I thought you guys said six, what, what am I missing there?
You, you're gonna be on there.
Me?
Just kidding. Just kidding.
I think it needs to be an odd number, just so that we don't have any, you know, chance for a tie on something. I think five's probably fine.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
Sue wants to be on it. She's shaking her head at me. Yes, thank you very much for all this hard work, I'm very excited that this is the direction that we're going, the other commissioners were in agreement, and I think this provides real clarity to the community on what we're spending taxpayer funds on.
Yeah. That's great, okay.
And you'll start, uh, um, publicizing this, and then, so the first grants are going to be due, January first, what was it, this time?
Uh, so the application window is November first through December thirty, thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay.
And we are gonna work hard as a committee and get it. Um, so, on the review and decisions on the twenty twenty-five launch, Mackenzie, the committee re- will review in, uh, January.
In January, okay. Oh, sorry, there we go, there we go.
We will have them, so that last meeting in January is when the commissioners will approve it, and the funds can be distributed February twenty twenty-sixth.
Okay.
In the coming years, we will, do it closer to, um, the application window will be in the fall, and then the funds will be distributed in January.
Okay.
So we will work hard this year to get it done within a few weeks.
That's something we've been asking for, for a long time. Get the snore streamlined, so.
Yep, that's awesome. All right, do I have a motion to approve with the changes and amendments made?
Would move that we approve the new grant program, um, titled, Valley County Community Improvement Grant Program with the changes made and for a launch date of November one, as presented.
Second.
Then move it in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Double aye. Very excited, thank you very much.
Awesome, okay, we'll get started on the website and then, um, kick off promotion.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mackenzie.
All right, thanks so much.
Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back with the next ten-thirty action item.